Hey Tara.
How are you?
Good. Hey Bob, how you doing?
I'm doing fine, thank you. How are you?
Not one of our little projects. Created in difficult circumstances, things were. Got rid of the artistic director who's made the theater. Tara, how you doing?
I'm doing pretty good. How you doing?
Adequate for my age.
I should say the same. I'm trying to find on the city's website where these. Well, I guess this is, I always wanted to see all the backups.
Yeah. Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
I got a quick question. If you're on the city's website, do you know where it is on here? I would see like the agenda with the auto backup. No, just for today. Yeah, I got the agenda. Okay, I'm sure it's on here, I just can't. Just to let you know if you're not talking to anybody or not.
What? We what?
They. Yes, they can.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. It is now. Thank you, Claire. I normally get bounced off the back walk anyway, but thank you. All right, folks, I think it's time to start the December meeting. The zoning board of appeals, thank you all for being here. The first thing that we'll need to do is I'll ask all board members if they had a chance to review the November five minutes. If they have, they'll have a motion to be accepted. Second. Over here. Minutes have been approved. Also, a little call, there were seven here, so we have full attendance. Any organizational or procedural items we need to deal with? So, we're gonna do some little different, we have two unfinished business matters. We're gonna take the second one, which is ZBA 2019. Then we're gonna deal with our new business matters and then come back with CBA 2015. So, staff or someone here that addressed ZBA 2019? Which is Jeremy Morris, homeowner of 5510 Mill Trace.
Is it green here? Is it green back there? Sorry, doesn't look like our Microsoft Office package is working properly. Seems like we can never get the technology right. It's probably on my end, because I don't understand it as well as they do.
You are not alone.
Yeah, did you hear about it?
Yes, sir. All right, thank you Chairman, sorry about the delay on that. All right, as you introduced, we have ZBA case 20-19 at 5510 Mill Trace Drive. This is old business, you did hear it last month, but just to reiterate the case. As you can see in the right picture here, about a little over half the property does fall within the 75-foot citywide stream buffer. The request is to grade install sod stump removal and erect a fence within the 75-foot stream buffer. And on this, we chose the word grade because it's the more extreme. Typically, what this type of project's gonna be is just stripping. So, they're taking all the grass out and then they're gonna plant sod on top of that. So, it's not a full-on grading or changing of the elevation per my discussions with the applicant. And at the last meeting, we did have some issues where the applicant did challenge whether this was a state buffered stream. I did speak with Jennifer from the EPD, she's over all of North Georgia. She made a site visit and did determine that this is a state buffered stream. So, all city buffers do apply as well for this location. And here's some images of the property you can see looking from the stream onto the side of his house there. And this is the section where he's looking to strip and remove the stumps that falls within the stream buffer, but only about half of the backyard is within that buffer. And on this case, staff recommends approval of grading, stump removal, and sod insulation with conditions. One, construction must be substantial compliance with the site plan dated August 6, 2020. Two, if construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. Three, land disturbance shall not encroach into the 25-foot state mandated stream buffer. And staff also recommends denial of the applicant's request to install a privacy fence within the 75-foot stream buffer. And at this time, I will turn it over to you, the chair, and I do believe the applicant is here. Would like to call him up to speak.
Sure, yeah, Jeremy Morris, 5510 Mill Trace Drive. So, I am aware that the fence has been recommended that it not be installed. And so, we understand that there's an issue with the code ordinance related to water flow as well as, I guess, disturbing the actual, the land there. And so, I'd like to state to the board that we are open to installing a fence that would have no negative impact on the water flow as well. Our original plan included a six-foot privacy fence, a capped cedar standard privacy fence with no spacing between that. However, really the intent, as I mentioned last time, you may not recall, but was mostly for containment. It's not about, like, sealing off the yard or anything like that. And so, we have some alternative fence plans as well too, including ranch-style fence, which is basically just mesh. Where we know that the original recommendation was to install fencing without any concrete footing, which is fine. Or any, we can use hand tools for that as well. Although the approval is for the sod to get a tiller in there as well. So, we will have machinery in there, but for the fence itself, we can install that without any machinery. And the ranch-style fence would actually just have mesh essentially. So, the posts would be four foot, four inch by four inch. And there's no concrete footing. And I actually have some diagrams of those, if you'd like to see those, maybe familiar with ranch style. And we feel that installing those would not disrupt any of the water flow, any of the erosion issues or anything like that. And of course, we wouldn't do that without impeding upon the 25-foot state buffer as well.
Yeah, do you have pictures?
There's a couple of examples in there, you know, obviously for aesthetic. The ranch is a, it's a four-foot or five-foot high ranch-style fence with cross beams, there's three of them. And there's about a six-inch, the eight-inch clearance between the ground and the lowest beam. So, really, the only impedance would be the actual post itself that stands there. There's some galvanized metal mesh that goes across that. And I've actually looked it up as well and talked to the fence installer. These are approved for flood zones as well too. And we really only need faces if there's some kind of like debris or things like that that would wash up against the fence with the galvanized steel. Obviously, we're living there, so if anything like that were to happen, we can clear that off. But we don't have water flow rushing down, there's actually no real erosion issues that we have at this point. Other than, you know, we have some sediment and things like that, that is what the sod essentially will replace. So, we're certainly open for any recommendations that the board would have as far as the type of fence that we could put in. But again, the main goal being just for containment for the pets and children.
Okay. Richard, has the staff looked at this? You guys have recommendations or thoughts on this, because you're denying offense. And then, I'm gonna find out, people in support and people. Let's hear, I don't hear what you.
I mean, we could go through it and then close the portion and ask some questions. I'd love to know what happened since the last.
Yeah, so the department's direction is still denial on this with the fence. This department's not looking for offenses within the stream buffer, just because it is supposed to be an undisturbed. And there's no real hardship to have a fence in your yard. And that's the direction the department has taken.
A question of Richard there is, how far into the buffer is this fence? And how far from the stream is the fence? I never could determine that.
Oh yeah, so if you can look at your modern, I believe, it's on there. This red line is the approximate line of the 75-foot, and you'll see the blue line down there is the stream. So, the property line closest is right at 25 feet. So, his property doesn't really fall within the 25-foot buffer at all. But right there at the edge, it does go about 25 feet from the stream.
So, it's fully into the 75, or the 50-foot of the 75-foot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, is there anyone in the room in support of this application variance? Zooming in, anyone zooming in in support of this application?
I do have one person with a hand raised, Barbara Snyder. You should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
No, you just answered my question, I wanted to see it on the screen again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is anyone else in favor? Would anyone else like to speak in favor? Actually, Barbara Snyder's hand is raised again, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
There is someone else.
Okay, there's no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, is there anyone in the room that opposes this application for either the grading work or the fence? Anyone zooming in?
If you're opposed, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I should know, hands raised at this time.
Well, then at this point, that would close the public part of this discussion. Well, I mean, I know that under the exemption and special administrative procedure, there is, there's a bunch of exceptions for what you can do in a stream buffer. But a fence just didn't want them. I mean, I've kind of reviewed those, the data's like eight different things you can do if you were gonna get a, if you're gonna get an exemption in special and.
We could ask questions though?
Yeah.
So, this is for the city. First question is, since the last time, have you guys gotten together at all? Because the way, the way the applicant's presentation was, he's presenting all these scenarios that he's reading to Ben, he's reading to do this. But, so, almost I felt as if you guys didn't get together, but I'm thinking you probably did. Then, the city's position seems to be, you know what, no matter what he presented, we're not gonna consent to offense. Is, am I understanding it right?
Yes, the department is holding to a strict application of the ordinance.
We have spoke, and I think one of the questions I did have was just kind of the rationale as to why. I understand it's the ordinance and that there's a strict, I guess, policy as it relates to water flow. But that was the part that I think I wanted to walk away from this, understanding like why the denial was recommended if the water flow issue was resolved with an alternate fence type. And fortunately, and to no fault of Richard, it's he wasn't able to provide that information when we discussed it multiple times.
But Jeremy, can you accomplish the private, you wanted privacy for your family, as I recall, right? Can you accomplish that based on what Bill was asking and stay out of the stream buffer? Can you still get that privacy for your family?
Unfortunately, no, the, I mean, well, if we were to install any type of enclosure, it would be basically less than a third of our yard. If you look at the, no, actually it's not on this slide here, but can I go back to that? Yeah, if you look at the stream buffer, our lot, the way the contour is and everything, we have basically a little corner of our yard. Essentially, that would be usable. And that's unfortunately with the animals and the reason that we actually purchased this property was because of the yard and the size and what we wanted to do with it. And so, the containment is, it's less about the privacy and it's more about just a barrier to allow our animals and our children to play back there.
So, I have a question for the city. If, I'm sorry, Mr. Morris, if they had purchased the house and it had an existing fence, would they be allowed to keep the existing fence?
The grandfather?
My understanding, if they had purchased it with the fence, that would be legal non-conformity.
Am I correct that they did purchase the house before the city made the 75-foot stream buffer as well?
So, they did buy the house before the city passed that particular ordinance. The county's ordinances were still in place, they just weren't city mandated, they were mandated by regulations of the county at that time. So, they were still in place, they just weren't an actual voted-on ordinance that the city had in place. Which is kind of confusing, but there's multiple layers between the county and the city when we became a city. So, that is a bit confusing.
Can I speak to that just for one second? And again, it may have no bearing on the decision at all, but we did purchase the house, like I mentioned, with the expectation that this lot would be able to be fenced in. And while we may have not done all of our due diligence in terms of like pending ordinance changes, things like that, that was the assumption. And then, we didn't realize that a year later, it actually had changed. Had we been notified that we weren't able to do that, most likely, we probably would have listed the home to move to a different location with proper notification and some notice. We love Dunwoody, but you know, that was, that was kind of the, one of the things we really wanted to accomplish when we got here. So, again, we're trying to like make sure that our yard and our property is in compliance as well as, you know, maintaining the beauty of Dunwoody. But it was a big sticking point for us, so unfortunately, we just didn't realize that that actually had changed a year after we moved in.
So, tell me now, and I think I understand it, but just the state, you mentioned, well, the city's mentioned, the state and the city ordinance as this, they're similar, is, does the state have anything against fences?
So, you can't do any development within the 25-foot buffer unless you go through the state permitting process. So, they don't allow anything without a special permit, and that takes about four to six months to get.
So, that's where I was getting, because this is in front of us now, and we're the city. I mean, do we have any authority to actually grant?
Well, he's not going in, he's not going into the state buffer. He's only in the city buffer.
But that 50 feet between the 75 and the 25, that last 50, as an appointed cause judicial board for the city, you do have the power to run approval or grant denial.
Okay, okay. Good point.
So, it's basically like if somebody wanted to build a deck into the 50-foot or the 75-foot buffer, they're just, he just wants to put a fence so that, because there's nothing else he can do with this lot to put any kind of, to contain kids.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the applicant, once more, tell us about your, what, what your challenges? I mean, why you need the variance? I mean, what's your hardship?
Like I said, it's mainly that we have a lot, that we have animals and children, and they are not able to enjoy the backyard essentially. We're pet people, we have dogs that we don't want running on other, you know, neighbors' yards, we have deer as well and wildlife that come in. You guys, you kind of know the, we have a lot of wildlife around here. So, it's mostly just walking, you know, animals in the front yard and not allowing children to play in the backyard and things of that nature. But also that, you know, the contour and the backyard wandering off of our actual property lines, you do get into that, as we mentioned last time, that kind of that slope that goes down there, which is a little bit of a hazard, a little bit of a security, you know, concern with the children and pets getting hurt. But outside of that, those are our main concerns with installing.
And your neighbors, are your neighbors' topography, are that similar to yours?
Yeah, I mean, it follows a common contour, so we, you know, there's. Yeah. And specifically, what are, what are you asking?
Okay, I'll tell you where I'm going. See, you need a variance, right?
Yeah.
You need to have something to tell us something that you're treated differently. And because you're different, we need to be able to consider something that is opposite of what the variance is. But in order to get that, you gotta show me that there's something unique about you that's different than everybody else in the neighborhood, or that's different. And I'm trying to get that for you, you understand? So, do the other people in the neighborhood have a fence and you don't have one? I mean, is it something different, something that makes you unique that I need to get out of this law and give you an exemption?
Absolutely, yeah, no, there's, there's many, many, you know, fences, some along this, you know, this stream, I believe. Certainly along others as well, maybe they were grandfathered in or not, I'm not quite sure. But we certainly are not the first, you know, fence to be erected within this proximity or anywhere near.
Is there, is there somebody else with a fence near you?
Not in my surrounding neighbors, the ones that are bordering our property, but certainly along, you know, the entire neighborhood, there's, there's many, many. I don't have it in front of me, but.
If, if I understood the hardship, he's saying the hardship is the law changed on him. He's saying that he got in there and then the law changed and had that not happened, he wouldn't, he probably would have sold the house. And if I understand his hardship is the law changed and then made it, is that right? Are you saying?
A hundred percent right.
He's, he's saying that's the hard, it's not these other things. He's saying the hardship or he's affected the law changed on him. And but for that, he wouldn't have even bought.
But in reality, the law didn't change. It was just enforcement of the law. I believe that's, I believe that's true.
Is that right?
When it became a city, the stream buffer became enforced because we were a city and we chose to enforce it. The county, you, you could have erected a fence. DeKalb County would not have, you would not have had to, they would not have gone to the lengths to look into everything that was happening in DeKalb County.
Sure.
So just so everyone's, I just want you to understand, we didn't change the law and the city of Dunwoody. We adopted the standards of DeKalb County. We just chose as a city to start using variances and the zoning board to make sure we stay within the, than the law that was already on the books.
No, I think that is fair and we know we've seen dozens of cases where the entire structure, most of the structure of the home is within the city's bloodstream buffer. So, you know, I understand the strict application, but really the intent is that there's no disturbance to vegetation. There's no disturbance to runoff. You've already approved the, the excavation and all that area and there's not removing any trees. So clearly there's no impediment to the stream. So in this case, I don't see honestly the harm of having a pervious fence situation like this. It doesn't use any machinery to install. It meets all the criteria except the fact that it falls in the footage, which I understand the city's trying to strictly enforce. But I don't, I don't really see the application being valid here.
I totally agree. I think, I don't see why he shouldn't be able to have a fence in his backyard. I make a motion to allow pervious, sorry.
Can I, can I ask the city one question before we go a little further? Because I recently installed a fence, so I went on the website to see what type of fences are actually allowed. So is the fence that was described or the pictures, is that allowable in the code?
Yes, I would believe that is allowed within the code. It's because it's not chain link. Chain link is the one that we do not allow in residential districts.
I found that out.
Wood post would, would be allowed.
Okay. I just want to make sure for, go to too much trouble if it wasn't allowed. Thank you.
One thing on that, and that, that's not the desired fence that we have, but we're totally fine with that if that is more applicable and we've.
Yes, and on the motions, if you're looking to approve all aspects of it, you could just do one motion. If you're looking to follow staff's recommendation, we will need two motions.
I motion to approve all.
In a second. Yeah, yeah, I gotta get them all. Yeah.
I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter 16, section 78 to encroach into the 75-foot stream buffer to grade, remove stumps and install sod with the conditions presented by staff.
And direct the fence.
And.
And direct.
And erect the fence. To encroach in the 75-foot stream buffer.
If we are going to approve this, may I ask that we get just a little more specific and condition it to that type of fence?
Yes, absolutely.
With a fence that has a pervious autumn?
Yeah, that's fine. Or resembles what submitted by the applicant.
I would say that.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Alright, duly passed. Alright Jeremy, thank you, sir.
Is that all in favor?
Yes.
Sorry, yes.
One abstained, one, one no.
Lot of posts, okay. Just for the record.
Yeah, sure.
We're going to be moving into the new business portion. I, I need to read this preamble. The zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, sign ordinance and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the superior court to DeKalb County within 30 days after the decision is rendered. And we will now move staff to ZBA 2020.
Thank you, Chairman and Board. Now we have ZBA 2020, 2303 Finnhurst Place. You can see here, this is a corner lot, which means it has front setbacks essentially on the north side and the west side. And this applicant is requesting to encroach into the rear yard setback by 10 feet to expand the rear patio. And as you can see here on the site plan, the existing covered patio encroaches approximately eight feet into the rear setback as it currently exists. And that's to my understanding and based on conversations with the applicant, that's how they purchased the structure and this was constructed under DeKalb County. And now the applicant wants to redo that back patio and expand it by two feet, which will put them at 30 feet from the rear property line. Whereas in the R100 zoning district, the roof setback is 40 feet. And on this one, staff is recommending approval with conditions. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan received on September 25th, 2020. Two, if construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Thank you.
And I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Is, is either the applicant here or someone on the applicant's behalf would like to speak, please come forward, sir, and give your, your name and your address. Thank you.
My name is Ed Servon and I am the homeowner for 2303 Finnhurst.
Is there, and, and you're here to support?
Um, yeah.
And you're, the reason you're.
It's my house.
Yeah, and the reason, the reason, the reason you're doing this is why, sir?
Looking to be able to get around the picnic table that's sitting in, you know, we, we have a family table in, in the room. And there's just, when there's chairs out, you, at 12 feet, you just can't get around it. So a couple more feet, she's going to give us some hip and some shoulder room, just so we can use the room a little more, you know, on a regular basis.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is anyone in the room in, in support of this application? Anyone zooming in and supportive of this application?
If you're in support, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised. Actually, I'm sorry, I do see Paul Barrett. You should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
Oh, hello. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm representing my father who lives down the street. I see no problem with this.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Anyone else zooming in that's in support?
I see no other hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Anyone in the room disagreeing with, opposing this application? Anyone zooming in opposing this application?
Please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, so that will close the public portion? Anyone, any questions?
Um, I just, we have so many before us tonight. I can't remember everything. I'm sorry. Can you, do you have the site plan? Is it, is it, is this a patio or is it a covered patio? I'm so confused. Yeah, it's just a covered patio. The screen porch, right? Basically. So we're going to butt it out two feet and you're going to, we're screening. Okay. Oh, no, just two feet. But it's, yeah, I understand why. I just, okay, thank you. I was, I can't remember anything.
Well, usually that's what we were looking for, Mr. Saboni, to tell us a little bit more, you know.
I'd like to make a motion. Motion to approve. I move to approve the request for variance from chapter 27, section 27-58 to allow an encroachment of 10 feet into the rear yard setback with the conditions presented by staff, which are, one, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan received on September 25th, 2020. If construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
I have a second. All in favor? Show by hand. Anamis. Prove. Thank you. We now move on to ZBA 2021.
Alright, thank you Chairman and Board. And now we have ZBA case 2021 at 1050 Spalding Club Court. Um, the applicant's request here is a variance to encroach in the rear yard setback by 10 feet and to increase the lot coverage to 41.5% to rebuild and extend the deck by 28 square feet. So if you see here, this is another case similar to the last one where the deck was built under DeKalb County and it already encroaches into the rear setback. Um, and currently it encroaches about 9.1 feet and the applicant is looking to expand slightly to get it up to 10 feet from the property line. And the current lot coverage is at 41% and the applicant is, the 28-feet extension would require it to go to 41.5% impervious lot coverage. As you can see here, this is the plan for it. They're pretty much building back in the same exact footprint, except there's a 28-square foot accessory where it's going to increase in size slightly.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
And you have no problem with that?
On this one, not that, not the slightly extra, no. I don't think that's going to be much difference than the existing footprint. Um, on this one, staff recommends approval with the conditions. One, construction must be substantial compliance with the site plan dated August 28th, 2020. Two, if construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. I turn it back over to the chair.
And we also have to prove the, the impervious?
Yes, that is.
Increase? Two motions.
So is the applicant here or someone on the applicant's behalf would like to come forward? Thank you. That'd be great. Names and addresses, or names and address, that'd be wonderful.
Joanne Schessler at 1050 Spalding Club Court. And we would, we're trying to rebuild a deck that's almost 30 years old and falling apart, basically. It's become a hazard.
We've all been there.
Actually, actually, when the home was purchased, we were told that the deck had been built below code.
Yeah.
So one of the things that we're also trying to do is to have it rebuilt so satisfied that it's only.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Is anyone in the room in support of this application? There you go. Anyone zooming in and support this application?
I do have one hand raised at this time. Jane Wolford, you should be able to unmute and speak.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. My name is Arrow Wolford. I just need a clarification. I got, I, I think my, 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 I think I owned the lot behind him. I, I, Zoe Douster, Teeny Douster gave us some land. I've been paying the taxes. I just want to know if it's my property that's behind them that they're extending into. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Staff's coming forward.
We have a computer up here. We're looking into it on our city GIS right now. Does he have owner behind him?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, we can, yes, yes, ma'am.
The expansion is on the side, not in the back. It's on the side.
Okay.
Of, and what we're, we're just, we're just putting a little pad on the side of our deck so that we can have a grill.
Yeah, you're not, and the same footprint is just going to the side. You're not going any deeper into property. Correct.
Who, we got a notice, you know, asking us, so do we, do we have the property in the back or the side?
Apparently your property was, we're being told is in the back, not on the side.
Okay, is that, do we know for that for sure?
Richard, go ahead, please.
The property owner behind this property is Lois Douglas.
Okay, that, and I know who, I know Lois and that's, that's the one on the side where you're going?
Uh, the side where it's projected is Jessica Jennings. That's the property owner there according to the survey.
Okay, so, so Lois is in the back and the side is Jessica?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have property in there, that area. If, if this person or another would like to buy it, we, we'd like to get rid of it.
Okay, wait, we're, we're really not going to entertain questions, sir. We just needed your, your comment. So that'd be fine. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. So is there anyone in the room in opposition to this application? What about zooming in? Any, anyone opposing this application?
If you're opposed, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I see no hands raised at this time.
Alright, so at this point, we'll close the public part of this discussion. I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter 27, section 27-58 to allow an encroachment of 10 feet into the rear yard setback with the conditions presented by staff. Construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated August 28th, 2020. If construction has not been commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval, approval shall be void. Move in second. All in favor? Anamis.
Alright.
And now the lot coverage, one please.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter 27, section 27-58 to allow an increase in lot coverage of 41.5% with the conditions presented by staff. Construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated September 15th, 2020. If construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Move the second.
And we have gotten a request. If we could get you guys to speak clearly into your mics when you are speaking. They're having trouble hearing you on Zoom.
Okay. So the next case is ZBA 2023?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman and Board. Right, we have ZBA case 2023 at 1114 Manning Court. So this is a request for a variance to encroach into the rear yard setback by 11 feet to rebuild the deck and reposition the stairs. So as the previous two cases were, this was a house that was built under DeKalb County and the portion of the house is encroaching into the rear yard setback and about half of the deck is encroaching into the rear yard setback. On, on this case, what they're looking to do is rebuild the deck and then realign the stairs along the side there. As you can see the picture here, and if we go back here, there is a small retaining wall over there because of topography. That's why they couldn't adjust the deck to the other side of the house. So there is a slight topography issue on this lot. As well as being allowed to be built by DeKalb County in the setbacks. Um, and with that, staff does recommend approval with conditions. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated September 15th, 2020. Two, if construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Alright, full, full disclosure, Scott and Melissa Hammer live right across the street from me. So I just want to understand. Scott, you want to just come forward if you'll and give us your name and address?
Scott Hammer, 1114 Manning Farms Court. Yes, so we are a family. We purchased this house in Dunwoody to be closer to schools. We purchased this house, the kitchen's a galley kitchen. As our family's growing, we decided we need to make a bigger kitchen. This is going to be basically pulling out some of the, the sunroom area and making it larger, just so more space. And when we bought the house, that was our plan to begin with. As time's collapsed on, we've had other financial obligations and now we're at a time where we are needing to grow the kitchen as well as part of the, reforeverse the deck. The deck is in really bad shape. As you can see from the picture, the rail broke off. So it's unsafe too. So we do want to bring it up to code as well.
Scott, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone in the room in favor of this application? Supporting it? Any, anyone zooming in in support of this application?
Please raise your hand. I see no hands raised at this time.
And did you want to come forward in support? I can't see Scott. Who's behind you? Yeah, just go ahead and get your name, your name and address, sir.
My name is James Kelly and in the spirit of your full, full acknowledgement, I first spoke with him about his room addition and I suggested that he get a. I first spoke with him about his room addition and I suggested that he get a survey. Because it looked to me that the house was close and that was a situation when he bought the house, unbeknownst to him, it was already over the setback. And the architect had done some plans for him. And he had not considered, you know, getting a survey. So the plans, I think it's on the paperwork you have. The house is already X number of feet over the setback. This increases it by very little. So that's why I didn't see it was a too much of a big thing, but I told him to apply for the variance anyway.
All right, thanks, sir. So is anyone in the room in opposition or opposing this application? Anyone zooming in opposing this application?
Raise your hand in the Zoom app. I see no hands raised at this time.
All right, at this point, that will close the public discussion portion.
Quick, quick question for Mr. Hammer.
Got it.
Um, just how much more are encroachment are you going to do from what you have right now?
Um, it's only going to go back. We plan on pulling, uh, moving the deck and then pulling back the sunroom to where the deck is now. And just making a small railing platform.
Um, give me a size. Is it a size? Let's see. I think it's small. Like you said, I'm, we have so many. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, less than two hundred square feet. Yes.
I make a motion to approve the request for variance from chapter twenty-seven, section twenty-seven dash fifty-eight to allow an encroachment of eleven feet into the rear yard setback with the conditions presented by staff. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. And if construction is not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you. We will now move on to ZBA two thousand and twenty-four, which is Roy and Francine Etheridge. Thirteen sixty-six Winter Creek.
Good evening, Board. Thirteen sixty-six Winter Creek Lane. Like most of these Dunwoody stream buffer cases, the property is almost half or more in the stream buffer as it exists. The applicant here is requesting a variance to build a cover porch, front porch with seating area within seventy-five foot stream buffer. The top picture is a rendering of what the proposed front porch would be. Bottom picture is the existing home. As you can see, the construction, the arc, the construction architecture fits in nicely with the home aesthetic. This also fits in, uh, with the neighborhood aesthetic as well. This is very close to the twenty-five foot stream buffer and the city engineer, uh, and the builder and myself and Mr. and Mrs. Etheridge have been in contact about this. Um, the, the silt fencing, the double line of silt fencing is going to go up. As you can see in this case, all the way, it appears to be underneath the porch. That's because it is the roof, cantilevered roof of the porch will be over that twenty-five foot buffer. But the city engineer and myself, um, strongly recommended, told them that we would not recommend approval if there's any limits of disturbance in that twenty-five foot stream buffer. And the builder, um, agreed. So this is the plan as it exists. The proposed work would be taking place, uh, left to right. So they would be working, building along as they go towards the stream buffer. This is the zoom in, uh, on the, on the site plan. And that corner is the proposed porch corner. It's cantilevered above ground. Uh, no impervious improvements of land disturbance proposed within the twenty-five foot stream buffer. These are some pictures from different angles. This project enjoys widespread neighborhood support. Uh, we've had multiple letters of rec, of recommendation, approval uh, from the community and we've had no one reach out so far, uh, requesting that be denied. So staff is recommending approval. Uh, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated October twenty-fourth. Uh, if construction is not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. Uh, land disturbance shall not encroach into the twenty-five foot state mandated stream buffer. I just put that in there just because it was so close to, to the, uh, to the buffer.
Okay, I do. Is anyone in the room, uh, in support of this application? Please come forward. Please, sir, and give us your name, names and your address. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Francie, F R A N C I, not Francine, Etheridge. And my address is one three six six Winter Creek Lane.
And I'm Roy Etheridge. Uh, Francine and I have owned this property since nineteen seventy-nine.
I, I think staff has explained the reason. So I think we're good. Thanks, thanks so much. Anyone streaming in in support of this application?
If you would like to speak in support, please raise your hand. I see no hands raised at this time.
And anyone in, in the room in opposition to this application? Anyone streaming in in opposition to this application?
Please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, at this time then, we'll close the public portion of this discussion. Bill, you want to do it?
I'll, I'll do it. I'll move. I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer to construct a new front porch addition. Construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. If construction has not commenced within one year of granting of this variance, approval shall be void. Land disturbance shall not encroach into the twenty-five foot stand, state mandated stream buffer.
They moved in seconded. All in favor of approving unanimous? Um, okay, we are now, we're going to go back to, thanks so much, unfinished business, which is ZBA two thousand and fifteen. Can I send Ty, if Ty White is here, thank you. This is for.
All right. Thank you, Board and Chair. I'll give a presentation before Mr. Ty White comes up to give his presentation. Um, uh, so this is ZBA case twenty dash fifteen and it's fifty-three oh eight, fifty-three eighteen and fifty-three twenty-eight Roberts Drive. So, um, this request is four different variances. Um, request one is reduction of the side yard setback from seven point five feet to five feet. Two, increase the impervious surface to seventy percent from forty percent. That's a slight error in my presentation. I apologize. Um, three, reduction of the rear yard setback from thirty feet to twenty feet for interior lots only. And that's lots twelve, thirteen and fourteen, which one of them is the Swansea House, which is in the southeastern corner there and the two lots above it. Those are the only three lots he's requesting that variance for. And four, allowance of a private street in a new development under ten acres. Um, so we all look at the seventy percent and we think it's for the whole development. The applicant has agreed to keep the impervious surface for the whole development under fifty percent. And then each lot has its own lot coverage. Um, there's only three that actually reach the seventy percent. The rest of them fall anywhere from thirty-seven to sixty-seven percent.
Rich, can I, can I ask you, is it, am I understanding wrong, but when this came before the city council, didn't they set a fifty percent number?
Yes, I believe that is a condition of the zoning as well, but I've also added it into the conditions for this variance as well. Just so future staff, it's pretty clear between both cases.
Wait a minute, I'm not sure I understand.
So they cannot see the lot coverage on Zoom. So I'm trying to figure out how to get to that.
Yeah, so, hey, let me, can, can I ask you just a question again about that? Cause.
Yeah, so council, well, sorry, I misunderstood your question. Council set the overall impervious surface for the entire project. So all fourteen lots to fifty percent.
Right. And as I understood, as I understood this, um, additional submittal, they just sent us, they said they'd be at forty-nine, one, three for the whole thing you're saying, but some individuals maybe more?
Yes, so the individual lots. So if we go back to the site plan in a second, they've got a huge green space in the center of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I got you. Okay.
Sorry, we're trying to move the Zoom screen so everybody can see.
So, so when you, I didn't do the math. So, so if you average all these lot coverages, you're saying when you average them out, it's going to come to forty-nine point one three?
So not just the lots. This includes, um,
Oh, you're right.
Green space.
Yeah, you're right.
Includes the streets within there.
Yeah, the common areas, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's right.
While, while she works on that, can I ask you, when, when you made the, you said that there's something wrong in the packet and you corrected it. Could you say what you corrected again? I'm sorry.
Yes, so after the city council meeting on Monday, I did send out a new package where I added, changed the conditions. Uh, one was to set it to a two years, um, approvals.
Okay.
For all the variances that will coincide with the eleven thirty rezoning request, uh, just to make sure the rezoning and the variances run together on the same timeline.
Okay.
Um, and then we added one more condition of the fifty percent impervious surface. Um, so we were pretty much just updating your packets. So you had all the information from the rezoning.
I guess my question is, these are correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Because it says seventy percent.
Yeah, no, I corrected that. Yeah.
So when you're saying seventy, it is not, or fifty rather, it is not per lot. It is for the entire subdivision.
Yes. So if you see the lot coverage, they've broken it down per lot, which does not include the streets. It does not include the green space they have implemented on. Once we get this fixed, I can show you the site plan and I can point out all of those characteristics.
Yeah, just to be clear that normally that would be the case. You're right. You have to prove each, one, a variance for each home, but the, uh, in aggregate, the council, uh, suggested to keep it under fifty. So because of the green spaces in the middle, it'll qualify.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's up to seventy percent or more in each lot.
So if count.
Yeah, yeah. So that's already.
There we go. We can see it now. All right. Can everybody see the lot coverages now that's being requested? All right, we'll give it a second for those on Zoom who are watching from home so they have a chance to look at it before we keep moving. And here we go. We'll go back up to the site plan. Zoom in a little bit. So as you can see here, the lot coverage, um, does not include the green space in the middle. That is not a part of each lot that we calculated there for the seventy percent.
Yes.
All right. And then, um, as part of the rezoning process, staff was asked to identify all our fifty neighborhoods within the city of Dunwoody. Um, staff identified eight neighborhoods with a total of four hundred and fifty-five R fifty zoned lots. And as you can see here, they are spread throughout the city in comparison to what the applicant's request is. And the lot coverage summary, all of the R fifty neighborhoods appear to have lots that exceed forty percent coverage. Six out of the eight R fifty neighborhoods appear to exceed lot coverage above forty percent. Um, R fifty neighborhood off Mount Vernon, which is Bellwood Park, um, has the highest lot coverage of all neighborhoods, estimated ranges between sixty and ninety percent lot coverage there. And Dunwoody Commons has lot coverage generally ranging from fifty to sixty percent. So those are some neighborhoods that we found were, would be similar to what this applicant is requesting. And on ZBA case twenty dash fifteen, staff is recommending approval, uh, with conditions, one, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. Revised November third, two thousand and twenty. Two, land disturbance and construction activity must start within two years of the date of the zoning approval of RZ twenty dash O two, November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, or the approval shall be void. Three, the overall site development shall be under fifty percent impervious surface. And with that, I'll turn it over to the chairman.
Are, are they not also asking for a private road? Is, is it?
That's part of the four requests they have.
Okay.
And these three conditions will run with all four.
With all those. Wonderful. Okay. So is the applicant or representative applicant here? Thanks, sir. Please come forward. Give us your name, sir.
Hello, my name is Robert Miller. Um, good evening. My name is Robert Miller on behalf of the applicant. I'm going blind. Came on fast. Uh, the rezoning application for this project was approved by city council in their meeting Monday night with twenty-six conditions included in your staff packet. The project will include a total of fourteen homes. There will be thirteen new homes. And the development will incorporate and preserve the historic Swansea farmhouse. The staff's review of the project, they found that this development was in conformance with the comprehensive plan and fills a gap for the city by providing age and place housing options, which has been a goal of the city ever since we incorporated twelve years ago. We have worked closely with staff, council and the neighbors to design a project that will fit in with the surrounding neighborhoods and will fulfill the needs and goals of the city's comprehensive plan. Empty Nestor Active Adult Housing utilizes design techniques which require the construction of large footprint homes on small lots to facilitate one-story living. But here in Dunwoody, there is a conflict between the comprehensive plan and the zoning codes. In this case, I believe the comprehensive plan should be the guiding document. Zoning codes can be changed and updated, but it is an infrequent and costly endeavor with a little public involvement. On the other hand, comprehensive plans are updated every five years. They require public involvement and are a reflection of the most recent will of the people and desires of the community. Developing aging in place housing requires three key components, one-story living, outside living features and small maintenance free lots. In order to fulfill the goals outlined in the city comprehensive plan, this project will need four variances. Reduced side yard setbacks, reduced interior rear yard setbacks, increase in lot coverage and private streets, all of which staff has recommended approval. Design techniques for developing aging in place housing products have been around for decades. And Dunwoody has a number of communities with large footprint homes on small lots. Bellwood Square, developed by Bill Grant over twenty years ago, is a great example. This neighborhood has small setbacks and lot coverage ratios in, in the sixty to ninety percent range. The city staff studied all of the R fifty neighborhoods in the city and did not find one neighborhood that could meet a strict compliance of the forty percent lot coverage. Additionally, six out of the eight neighborhoods, the average lot coverage of the entire community exceeds the forty percent lot coverage restriction. During the Dunwoody City Council meeting, we determined that a house in strict compliance with the R fifty codes would be only a thousand to fifteen hundred square feet, which would fall short of meeting the intent of the comprehensive plan for age and place housing. We estimate that in order to comply with the spirit intent, the comprehensive plan. We estimate that in order to comply with the spirit and intent of the comprehensive plan, a typical home incorporated in the three components for age-in-place housing would average forty-two-hundred, four-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen square feet of impervious area. Applying that requirement to our development, the lot coverage will range from thirty-seven percent to no more than seventy percent. But when you account for the common green space left undeveloped in the entire three-point-four acres, the impervious area of the property, of a project, would be no more than fifty percent of the site. By designing community green space rather than just making the lots bigger, the project fulfills another criteria of the comprehensive plan, expanding community green space and increasing connectivity. The review of the criteria specified in section twenty-seven, three-ninety-seven looks at six questions. Number one, will the variance be detrimental to the public health? The proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and achieves the longstanding goal of the city to bring age-in-place housing to the community and would act as a transitional zoning between RA-five and R-one-hundred zonings with lower density than the adjacent RA-five properties. Moreover, the proposed development with associated variances as a whole provides benefits to the community and surrounding neighbors by preserving the historic Swansea farmhouse, providing enhanced buffers to the adjacent residential properties not required by code, offering screening to the Dunwoody Knoll with the relocation of the city storm drain line, and provides the city with enhanced storm detention above what is required by code as well as storm drain facilities not currently in place at all. Therefore, with the approval of the zoning variance in, in the community, the, the community and the adjacent neighbors derive the benefit of this development through the applicant's willingness to go above the required codes. Question number two, is the variance based on conditions unique to the property and not created by the owner? The requested variances are unique to the subject property, given the preservation of the Swansea farmhouse and its impact on the site plan. Additionally, the requested variance would bring the property in line with other R-50 properties throughout the city with regard to lot coverage and setbacks. The requested setbacks and lot coverage variance are a result of the city's condition requiring one-floor living, which results in larger impervious footprints. The one-floor living combined with outdoor living space also conforms with the goals of the comprehensive plan by providing age-in-place housing product. Moreover, the city's lot cover ratio is a lot, is, is a per lot, not community-wide. But here, the applicant has agreed to conform to a community-wide impervious requirement, furthering the benefit to the city by providing enhanced storm water, storm drained capacity and community green space. Number three, will a strict application of the zoning ordinance deprive the owner of privileges enjoyed by others? A strict application of the requirements would unduly burden the property owner by applying strict restrictions, by applying restrictions to the property that are inconsistent with other similar situated R-50 communities in the city and would go against the goals of the comprehensive plan. Does the variance go beyond the minimum necessary and are they consistent with other properties? The requested variance is the minimum required in order to comply with the conditions imposed by the city so that the development can achieve the goals of the comprehensive plan. Further, the variances bring the subject property in line with other similar situated R-50 communities within the city, and in many cases, this project remains less dense and more restrictive than other R-50 communities. Number five, will a strict application of the zoning ordinance cause undue hardship, not just an inconvenience? A strict application of the zoning provisions would make it impossible to build an age-in-place product with single-level living as required by the conditions and in accordance with the goals of the comprehensive plan. Finally, number six, is the variance consistent with the spirit of the zoning ordinance in the comprehensive plan? The requested variances are consistent with the intent of the ordinance and required in order to carry out the longstanding goals of the comprehensive plan and bring an age-in-place housing to the city that is walkable to the village. Thank you for the time this evening. Be happy, Andrew, any questions you may have.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone in the room in support of these, of this application for these variances? Is anyone zooming in, in support of this application, these variances?
If you'd like to speak in support, please raise your hand. I see no hands raised at this time.
Anyone in the room in opposition to this application? Anyone zooming in, in opposition?
I do show one hand raised, Barbara, Barbara Schneider. You should be able to unmute and speak.
My feeling is that it will be too closely crowded, that it will affect traffic, especially with the new school and the nature center. And I wonder if you have a comment on that, please.
You, you wonder if the board has comments, is that, is that what you're saying? No, we just, we just need to have your comments, ma'am, that's fine. We understand what the nature of opposition is, thank you, thank you very much.
Also, I have William Letson, who is raising his hand, and you should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, I'm speaking on behalf of many members of Dunwoody Knoll subdivision who do not support the proposed variances as they arise from the developers' own actions, as they were the ones that suggested the age-in-place community development. So they should not get away with blaming all these restrictions on the city, they were the one that proposed this. And they're also seeking to force many more homes into the design by seeking the variances. As you know, and as you stated at the beginning of the new business section, under the, the zoning board must adhere to the municipal code adopted by the city, and under section twenty-seven dash three-ninety-seven, Dunwoody code requires the variances be denied. As you also know, under the subsection, all those, all six findings are required or the variance must be denied. A-two of the section is not met because it requires, excuse me, the variance request be based on conditions that are not unique to the property, are not generally applicable to other properties in the same zoning district, and were not created by the owner or applicant. Here, the applicant sought to rezone the properties for its age-in-place development. The applicant is then seeking to subdivide the property into a higher number of lots, and then the applicant is seeking to, seeking relief from the conditions it created with its proposal for rezoning and subdivision of the property. As the requested variances all stem from conditions created by the applicant, then now is required under the code. City staff also mentioned in its December third memo, the, the other two prongs of the subsection are met. So exactly zero of the conditions of A-two are satisfied and the variance request inquiry must end here. Even still, subsection A-three is not satisfied because the staff found that a strict application would not preclude the applicant from creating a single-family subdivision. A strict application merely reduces the likelihood of this particular development. Many other possible.
We're, we're not hearing anything at this point. Is that, have we? Okay.
He seems to have lost reception.
Pardon?
Or which would necessitate fewer and/or no variances. And lastly, I would point out that city staff's recommendation is in direct contravention to the city code. A conversation with Richard Hathcock today indicated the city was recommending approval because the development is a type supported by the city master plan or comprehensive plan and future land use plans. You heard the applicant echo that. However, even if support can be found in there in those, those are just city desires, and the variances would run afoul of the city code, which is the law and must be enforced. The city can change the code if it wants, but until it does, the, the code currently in place must be adhered to and the application denied. Also, any suggestion of signaling of support of the variances from city council by approval, the rezoning is inaccurate and improper. City council was instructed it could not consider the requested variances in evaluation of the rezoning application. Consequently, council cannot be said to be in support of the variances that it was not permitted to consider. For instance, it did not approve that less than fifty percent overall development coverage would be okay under the variances requiring forty percent. They said the, the variances would have to be taken up separately, they just mandated that the overall lot coverage if, would have to be under fifty percent in any case. Council was under an oath and is under an oath to uphold and adhere to the city code and suggestions that it recommends disregarding the code is improper. Similarly, a staff recommendation to violate the, the code would be improper. In conclusion, this is a simple case of the applicant creating its own problems and then seeking relief therefrom. Unfortunately for the applicant, the code is crystal clear that relief from the conditions created by the applicant are not eligible for variances. There's no latitude in the code in this regard, and the requested variances are required to be denied under the city code. We thank you again for your time, performing your civic duty and standing up to developers who are attempting to develop in violation of the city code. Thank you, God bless and stay safe.
Thanks, sir. Is anyone else zooming in, in opposition to the application for these variances?
Barbara Schneider has raised her hand again. You should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
Yes. One question, is it, is it all right to ask the proposed price, selling price of the houses?
No, we don't, no, we don't entertain questions like that, ma'am, no, no, ma'am, that would not be appropriate. That's okay, thank you. I think at this point, that, that closes the public portion discussions. If I understand it right, what we, what, what you're asking for in one variance is basically two-point-five difference on the, on the side setback, right? You want to go from seven-point-five to five feet. So you're talking about a two-point-five-foot difference, right?
Yeah, there's.
On side setback?
Yeah, yeah, if you look at it, there's four variances.
Right, yeah.
So we'll walk through all.
No, 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 let me, let me go ahead. So, so the second one, I understand you, you're within what city council allowed, right? Because you're forty-nine point thirteen percent? Is that right, overall?
Well, the city council put a condition in our zoning that the overall impervious of the site couldn't be any greater than fifty percent. And so that is set as a condition from the city council because the way the city of Dunwoody has, has bifurcated their zoning and their variances, a number, if not most municipalities, they allow a, a combination zoning variance application. So on, in other cities, you would have applied for a zoning with the variances, and then the legislative body would have taken that up at one time. Those cities still have a ZBA like you, which would take up strictly variance requests. But since Dunwoody doesn't have that process yet, which I believe they're working on coming up with different one, we're set with a, a structure where you have to do zoning and by the structure of the city, city council doesn't have purview over you and you don't have purview over them, and so that's why it's a structure like that. But this was an area where they could step in because at the time, I wasn't really even sure, no, could we have it as a condition here, and I think it's fine. But I wasn't even sure if you even had the authority to do an impervious over the whole site because you only have authority over variances to the code, and the code is just a per lot thing. So what we were trying to do was come up with a scenario so council would be comfortable that, hey, this total site will have a limited impervious and, but they don't want to step on your toes and touch anything with a lot.
Okay. And, and your third variance, you basically just want a ten-foot difference, right? So you want to go from thirty feet to twenty feet.
And that is only on interior lots, so we have a thirty-foot backyard setback on all of the exterior lots. So all the lots that back up to Dunwoody Knoll, to Dunwoody Walk and to Fairfield, those will all remain at a, at a thirty-foot backyard, but only on the interior lots, which is, if you look at this, it, it's the two site, it's the two at the entrance and then, and then the Swansea farmhouse, because that'll back up. And all of those three lots back up to new homes that we are building. And so that, that would be something that homeowners would be, you know, agreeing to as, as part of the community.
And then, and then the private street.
And then, yeah, the private street is, is, I won't call it a court, but it's, it's kind of odd in the code that you're only by rights allowed to private streets if your development is over ten acres. And I'm not quite sure where the ten acres come from, but since we're less than ten acres, the only way to have a private street is through a variance. The private street was dictated by the public works in the city because they don't feel that the city makes any money by having, taking care of streets. So they're making them, all the homeowners, take care of them.
Okay.
But I don't think we're getting any reduction in property taxes, but that's all right.
Okay.
Richard, I had one question, Rob. If you did the thing, the impervious coverage on a per lot basis as opposed to the average of forty-two eighteen, how's that look?
So that was this.
That's the chart he was.
That was the chart, this chart that we set up. And what this has taken is just an average, and I think I sent out, I sent this out to all of you guys in an email as well.
No, no, I, I got that. What I'm saying, if you did it, if you did it lot by lot, not a forty-two eighteen average, because each lot's different.
No, 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 no. If you look at this chart.
Okay, I must have the wrong chart.
Lot, no, the, the one you're looking at, lot number.
Yeah, I see that.
The, the area, that area number, that, that's the size of the lot, that's the square footage of the lot.
I got it.
Um, the forty-two eighteen is the average of the impervious of the house. Now that includes the house, any backyard, patios, the driveway, any walkways, anything, any impervious related to the construction of the house, and that's an average of the forty-two eighteen.
That wasn't my, that wasn't what I was asking. If you got rid of averages, forty-two eighteen, throw that out. You know, like per house basis, per lot basis.
Yes.
How much does that change the picture as far as the number of lots that are in excess of forty or excess of fifty, or excess of sixty? Would, you know that calculation at all?
I'm not quite sure I understand, Bill, because the only way that I can give you a, a lot coverage, you know, impervious, you have to come up with some average impervious.
I was just asking, it's not a.
No, no, no.
Point for academic consulting, but, but it, I just wondered if there was, if you took fourteen lot or thirteen lots, really, but they, they did each one on impervious surface. Some of them have a pool and hardscape, some of them don't, and all that. If you look at all thirteen, you get about forty-two eighteen as an average, just individually. How would each look? I didn't know it'd be more favorable or less favorable, I didn't know, but.
More or less impervious?
No, if, no, each lot has a certain amount of impervious surface as a, as a, as a part of the lot in total. So if you take each lot's impervious surface divided by the lot in total, you'll come up with the per lot, the impervious percentage, lot by lot by lot by lot.
That's what this chart shows. So lot number one is six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifteen square feet of dirt. And if I put a house as big as four-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen, it will be sixty-one percent.
We're not there, so let's drop it.
So if you added all the lot coverages percentage-wise and divided it out by fourteen, you end up with fifty-five point two percent.
No, that's a different calc, that's the calculation at the top.
Don't, don't spend more time on it. The other comment I'd make, though, Richard, is that just, if, if you took the Swansea house out of the equation since it's an existing facility, because it is what it is, then the rest of it apparently is about forty-six percent impervious coverage. So it's actually lower than the total of the forty-nine point one-three. So it's just interesting.
Yeah, the, the other thing, I, I was listening to, one of the people said something about there was a concern about the properties being too close, right? But it's actually, the closeness is within that.
In the property itself.
Within the property itself, but it's not going to be too close to other properties or places, right?
It's, it, the new houses are as far away as any other R-50 home would be from a property line. So I mean, that, that, that isn't any different at all.
Whoever chooses to buy in there just buys that type of community.
That's, that's correct.
But the R-50, it's supposed to be seven feet between the lots, isn't that correct? And you're asking us to, seven and a half, and you're asking, and you're asking us to do five.
And you're asking us to, seven and a half, and you're asking us to do five. So two and a half on each side, less than COVID, I'm just going to say that for the record.
Has the, has the city attorney or anybody taken a look at this letter that came from the residents of Dunwoody Knoll? I mean, I don't know whether, are the arguments, good arguments, or what?
They're arguments.
Okay, I'm curious.
Yeah, I mean, again, it just seems to me, when we boil this down, we're talking about side setbacks of 7.4, so two and a half feet on side, that's what we as a board are supposed to be deciding. 20 feet versus 30 feet, a private street, the only other issue is impervious. And, and I understand this deal with city council, I mean, to me, it's fairly limited in what, what we as a board have authority to be ruling on. Do we give you 5 feet versus 7.5, do we give you 20 feet versus 30, a private road, and then?
I mean, sitting through, listening to what you did on everybody tonight, what did we have, five, eight? It really is no different, except I'm asking for four things, but you've had them all tonight.
Right.
You've had, you've had, you've had encroachments, you know, you've had, you've had lot coverage. I mean, you've had all of these things tonight. What I'm asking for is this whole total property. And I think the interesting thing is, and a lot of people keep going, well, no, 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 no. All you get to look at is the code. Here's the code, you have to enforce the code, it's just the code. But, you know, when you go to question number six, is really, question number six ties in everything, because question six is saying, what is the spirit of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan? Because the reality is, our city never progresses to the future. The future land use plan and the comprehensive plan, they define the future. That, that's where we want to go. The code doesn't predict the future. The code, if you really think about it, because you talked about it tonight, the code is the past. That's what the CAB county had, we brought it in, we have cast a vision, and as, as people bring along new things to get us to that vision, the code's going to catch up with us. And I think one of the really amazing things, and I don't mean to drone on, but going through this process with the city has been amazing. We have a great staff, and even them, we've come in and we've all kind of realized things in the code, and we're like, oh, well, that's a problem. And this, this staff is going, okay, well, let's, how do we get it together? And I think just Monday night, you know, Jim Reitischer made the comment, says, hey, listen, we've got some problems in our system that we need to get fixed, but that shouldn't hold us back from getting the developments that we want, so.
Right, thank you.
Um, I really am okay with this. I'm talking to the board now, we've closed public.
Can we have, we have closed all public, yeah.
Um, I'm really, I'm struggling with the closeness of the homes, of getting it down, of doing the variance there. Um, I understand that everybody that goes into the development will understand that they're going to be five feet from their neighbor, literally, cup of sugar across the window. But my question is, if an R50 was approved with that, that's such a, I mean, it's not a lot of room between two houses anyway, and now we're trying to squeeze it, and that, that concerns me that that was what was asked for by the developer. And then they're trying to squeeze it again, and, and I guess my question, I'm not asking the developer a question right now, I'm talking to the board for a minute, is, is, I don't, that bothers me, and I think I just want to talk about it, and.
I'll tell you, Claire, I mean, I thought about it, and obviously, you've seen my vote, I guess I tend, well, legally, me, I'm like, okay. Does everybody have this? The difference, I look in this, is you're buying a neighborhood. You're not, I mean, this is like, you know, a little New York City within Dunwoody. This is what, this is what they all want. I mean, so if you, if you guys are all consenting to this, and we're actually creating a new type of living there. So if they're all fine with it, and if that's the type of environment you want to live in, that's fine. It's that little section off of Robert's Drive where that whole thing, I mean, the other, I thought about traffic, I don't live too far from there. But that's not within us, you know? And, you know, I hope, I was thinking that maybe, even though it's not our purview, maybe Rob would probably tell them that there's some feasibility to make them feel better. But it's also an older neighborhood, although not too old, because I think it's 55 that you have to be in to get in there, so I think. But, but yeah, but that, that's how I reconcile, because I have a problem with it too. But it's either, everybody's going to have the same thing, and they all want to jump into it and have it that way, hey.
Well, that's true, because I was at the development of Georgetown, and they are, you know, the John Whelan, they're, they're like right on top of each other. But in your, but that's a very good point you made, because that was a separate build, the old pipe farm. And we, it was approved because it was its own development, kind of in its own. It didn't, it doesn't back up to the residential. But we seem to be doing okay with the setbacks with the residents, so that's fine. So, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I guess, I guess the city needs to hear about R50s, and maybe, maybe they're, right now, the seven and a half feet is not, maybe there needs to be more of a slide, I don't know. Or everybody needs to come to the.
So staff, you looked at the eight, the eight existing R50s, how did the, what were the side setbacks like? Were there any within the, like, looking at a five-foot range? I know there's all kinds of variances, I live near Bellwood, I get it, but I don't know.
So our research.
You guys checked the impervious, I understood that, but did you guys look at the sideback, or setbacks for all those?
We couldn't really do the side setbacks, because we were looking at aerials, and taking the aerials based on our GIS, and measuring out the size of the house, based on the DCA tax assessor's size of the house, and then measuring out the driveways and all the impervious. When it comes to setbacks, we can't really measure that too much on our GIS, because you've got shadows, you've got the house at an angle, like, that's not something we looked at, because we did not think we could provide an accurate.
I, I don't, I, I don't think, and I'm not on a spirit, I don't think houses can get COVID. So I mean, I think if these people, because they come out of the house, they don't have to get near anybody. I guess I don't, I don't see any nexus between the distance and COVID. I mean, because people, people. Yeah, marketing, marketing, yes, yes. Right, correct, correct, yeah. Some, some of this is proximity to Dunwoody Village and everything too, in terms of just location and stuff, so.
I want to point out that you said the houses are five feet apart, they're 10 feet apart. Because it's five feet either side of the property line. The house would be 10 feet apart.
Okay.
Yeah, and to point out, one other thing is that the subdivision right next door, Dunwoody Walk, those houses are 10 foot apart. See, those houses are built with a zero lot line. And then fire code requires a 10-foot separation. So the neighborhood right next door to this, Dunwoody Walk, they're 10 feet apart. So there's a number of R50, because a lot of these R50s were done as RA5s. And in an RA5, you have zero side yard setbacks. But, but if you read the code, an RA5, if you do, um, single-family homes, has to be built to the R50 standards, except it's a zero side yard setback.
Yeah, the other thing also is that you could look at it as townhomes, it's townhomes, a little bit separated, you know?
Look at these houses on Dunwood Parkway, right?
That's different altogether, you can't compare that.
No, it's good, sir. Yeah, sure, sure. Yeah, yeah, I agree. All right, go ahead.
Go, are you sure?
You're the attorney.
All right.
I'll pass off to another attorney.
Here we go, you guys saved the big one for me, right? All right, on ZBA 20-15A, 5308, 5318, and 5328, Robert's Drive, on the side yard setback, I move to approve the request for variance from chapter 27, section 2758, to reduce the side yard setback to 5 feet with conditions presented by staff. One, construction must be substantial compliance, in substantial compliance with the site plan dated May 27, 2020, revised November 3, 2020. Second, land disturbance and construction activity must start within two years of the date of the zoning approval of AZ 20-02, November 30, 2020, or the approval shall be void. Three, the overall site development shall be under 50% impervious surface. So that's option one, so do we do each one, or?
Second.
Move in second, all in favor?
The rezoning has 26 conditions with the, that was set by city council.
Right.
It's a good question.
So staff will be monitoring those based on every house that's built. So every time they submit a, they've got to first come in and submit an LDP for land disturbance, so they can grade and get everything ready to go. So we're going to check the conditions when they start grading. We'll check those conditions when they build each house individually. And then at the end, when they have to do a final plaid as complete, we'll look at the overall development, once every house is built, to make sure everything meets those conditions as well. So there's multiple, there'll be at least 20 times we look at those conditions before he can be officially done with this development.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, all right, okay.
Okay, so we voted the first one, right?
Did you vote, or no? Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I need to stand up, and I'll make sure that doesn't happen again, go ahead, so I see you.
Okay, so we go on the second one, right?
Right.
Okay, now on ZBA 20-15B, 5308, 5318, 5328, Robert's Drive, impervious surface variance. I move to approve the request for variance from chapter 27, section 2758, to increase the impervious lot coverage to 70% with staff-presented conditions. Construction must be substantial compliance with the site plan dated May 27, 2020, revised November 3, 2020. Land disturbance and construction activity must start within two years of the date of the zoning approval of AZ 20-02, November 30, 2020, or the approval shall be void. The overall site development shall be under 50% impervious surface.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
All, all those in favor? All right. We shall move on to C. On ZBA 20-15C, 5308, 5318, 5328, Robert's Drive, that's a rear, yes, that said rear yard setback. I move to approve the request for variance from chapter 27, section 27-58, to reduce the rear yard setback to 20 feet for lots 12, 13, and 14, with the staff-presented conditions. Construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated May 27, 2020, revised November 3, 2020. Land disturbance and construction activity must start within two years of the date of the zoning approval of AZ 20-02, November 20, 30, 2020, or the approval shall be void. The overall site development shall be under 50% impervious surface.
Second, it's been moved in second in favor?
All in favor?
Bill, it's unanimous, okay, and the last one.
All right, we got to D now. ZBA 20-15D, 5308, 5318, 5328, Robert's Drive, for the private drive now. I move to approve the request for variance from chapter 16, section 16-237, one, to allow for private street in a new development with fewer than 10 acres, with the staff-presented conditions. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated May 27, 2020, revised November 3, 2020. Land disturbance and construction activity must start within two years of the date of the zoning approval of AZ 20-02, November 30, 2020, or the approval shall be void. The overall site development shall be under 50% impervious surface.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. Wonderful, any, do we have any other business? Yep, is Forrest, public comment, I just want to make sure everyone understands that this is going to be Bill McCann's last night. So Bill has served four terms, three years, 12 years, this man has served the city, and I think you were to be congratulated, so, praise. He's been a mentor and a teacher, and he's the one of them.
I know.
Same time.
Well, your service has been appreciated, Bill, really, hasn't it, sir? Okay, because, hi.
Wow, we're going to miss you, Bill.
Hi, me, 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 George, staff, great job, thank you.
Uh-oh, Joe, pressure's on.